Present.
Marcus, here. Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be by Father Charles Threwitt from St. Andrew's Angelican Church. Did I say that right?
English.
Okay.
Lord God, you sent your Son to come among us to proclaim your kingdom in villages, towns, cities, and lonely places. Grant that your presence and power may be known throughout this land. Have mercy upon all of us who live and work in this city of Lancaster. Give these our leaders wisdom and courage to carry out the business and policies which will benefit this city and her neighbors. And grant that all the people of our city and our nation may give thanks to you for food and drink and for all other bodily necessities of life. Respect those who labor to produce them and honor the land and the water from which these good things come. All this we ask in the holy name of your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Man, you want to pledge allegiance?
If everybody would face the flag, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Oh, we have a student speaker, Armando Carlos, from Parkview Middle School.
My name is Armando, and today my subject is the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July, what thoughts do those words bring to mind? Picnics, backyard barbecues, baseball games, parades, fireworks, a day off work, maybe all of these things, and more. But sometimes we become so interested into these things that we tend to forget what this special day is all about. The Fourth of July is known as Independence Day. We all learned in our history classes in school what this day was about. We learned of the long struggle with England as our country tried so hard to be free, to live our lives as we chose to live, freedom from all kinds of unfair treatment from a government thousands of miles away. We knew that we finally had to go to war to get the freedoms we felt we deserved. It was called the War for Independence, also known as the Revolutionary War. We know what the outcome was. We honor to this day names like Patrick Henry, George Washington, Benjamin Franklin, and others who put their lives on the line for ideas in which they believed. It is great to have fun on the Fourth of July, but let us all take a little time on this day to remember and appreciate not only the hard-won freedoms that we enjoy, but also that brave generation whose courage and hardships helped make it possible. Thank you.
Do we have a waste management award? Marvin Christian's gonna do that?
You're gonna do it.
I'm gonna do it.
I'm going with you.
You're going with me.
So much for the strong mayor.
Who do we have in the waste management?
Six surprise.
Well, if I knew it was you, I'd have come down sooner.
Oh, Waste Management has decided to help us in our fight for crime in the Amal Valley. What they've done is they've developed a system, and it's called Waste Watch. Waste Watch has their drivers look, and they don't get involved, but they do call in. It's the extra eyes and ears that we need and the community involvement that we need from our businesses. So this is the reason that we'd like to recognize Waste Management for what they do in the community. Thank you.
It's not, I mean, it's Waste Management, but so much it's in the version. I can't tell you how much she does for this community and how much she brings Waste Management into it. I mean, think about the number of eyes and ears she puts out to the street. This is pretty much your idea. She is truly a blessing to this city. Will you read it?
Thank you. Thank you for being up by the morning.
The other day I was putting the wrong trash in the wrong bag, and my wife informed me she was gonna call Sandra. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Mayor Paris, RCC two and RCC three, I need to recuse myself on the consent calendar.
Okay. Then let's do RCC one first. Is there a motion?
I move to pass RCC one.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Mr. Man will be removing himself from the chambers. Is there a motion on RCC two and RCC three?
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. Come on back in. Any council consent calendar items to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the council consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. We'll now hear a staff report on new business item one from Robert Neal.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, it is a privilege to give you an overview of a program we are calling Solar Lancaster. There are three things that have made for us and hopefully for our community solar to be cost-effective. First, we have the best environment for solar, the best solar radiation in the country. We are close and close proximity to load, and we also have land. Secondly, we are in a state that has some of the highest electrical rates in the nation. Unfortunately, I have to say that I fully expect those rates to continue to rise. Thirdly, we are in a time that the state and the federal government has incentivized solar. I think Jim Haas had expressed it best when he said to me that there are those who will profit from the incentives offered on solar, and there are those who are gonna pay for those incentives. And I think that's exactly correct. With this in mind, we have tried to set up a comprehensive program to capitalize on our solar resources, to reduce our costs, help homeowners and businesses save money, and put people to work. It is our intent to make people aware of these opportunities. The city has entered into an agreement with, for solar-produced electricity that will save us literally millions of dollars over the course of that agreement. And it has the added benefit of providing our city facilities with covered parking. We want to help others benefit from the success and things that we have learned in our work with solar. To this end, we have set up a three-phased plan. The first phase is the business and residential program that we are working currently with eSolar. Our program is not exclusively with eSolar. We are looking for other partners, especially local businesses, who can provide services that will help our residents reduce their energy demand and provide pathways to cost-effective, reasonable energy options. It's our belief that with our program that we're gonna see other businesses benefit from community awareness of solar. One partner that we have is the University of Antelope Valley, who has agreed to help train up a local workforce to install and maintain solar systems. SolarCity, our first solar company participant, has leased office space and will help set up a local office here employing 23 people to start. We are also working with the home-building community to make it easier for new homeowners to install solar on their homes. KB Homes is in discussion with SolarCity about providing access to solar systems through their roofs without violating the roof's warranty. KB Homes is also working with BYD to give new home buyers an option to install a battery system in conjunction with solar systems to give homeowners true energy independence. We have worked with SolarCity to see if we can provide some additional incentives for our businesses and residents, and you see that listed up on the screen. Part of our activities includes simplifying the process, making it easier for people just to get the benefits of solar. We are streamlining our permitting process. We have pre-approved plans for solar. I also would like to mention that this program is not just for the residents of Lancaster. We would offer our solar program to anyone who lives in the Antelope Valley who wishes to participate. Our second phase is to work with other government agencies to see if we can't help save money. Discussions are already underway with Lancaster School District, Eastside School District, the Fairgrounds, and the Hospital. We think we can help them save money and achieve other benefits in an otherwise difficult economy and a recession. This is what we're talking about. For ourselves and the school districts, it is covered parking with lighting underneath that will reduce the cost of electricity to the schools and provide a much-needed amenity. Phase three is to become an exporter of renewable energy. Municipal utilities, IOUs, investor-owned utilities, people like Edison, are all required to have renewable energy in their portfolio. By the end of this year, they're required to have 20% of that, of the electricity they produce, come from renewable energy. We are in the most opportune place and time to help municipal utilities and IOUs meet their energy goals. The proposal we are bringing before you is a continuation of things that we have already started. We have wanted to lead by example. We have already begun to do energy efficiency improvements on our own facilities and to use solar energy in a manner that helps us save money, create jobs, and demonstrates what can be done. We have developed a task force to further focus our efforts to help not only ourselves but our community to benefit by the favored position that we have, living in Lancaster. You'll notice one such item is the County Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which we hope will come out in September. There are many things that we are looking to do with this. I'd like to say that Jeff Palmer with SolarCity is in our audience, and I'd like to conclude my remarks and stand ready to answer questions you may have. So this is a really exciting program for our community. I want to thank the council for their leadership in this. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Robert.
Thank you. I move that we approve the Solar Lancaster program and direct staff to begin implementing various alternative energy programs and authorize the city manager or his designee to sign all documents.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
It's not blinking yet.
It's unanimous. Moving on to new business item number two, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pardon?
Nothing.
You have before you an ordinance relating to parental responsibility. This ordinance was drafted at the request of Vice Mayor Smith and is patterned on a similar ordinance in the city of Norwalk. It makes parents responsible for the acts of their minor children. Any minor who is convicted of a breach of public peace, and that's a violation of any federal, state, or local law, would, it could result in the parent becoming guilty of a misdemeanor at the same time with a fine of up to $500 for failure to supervise the children or to actively allow them to do what they're doing. And in addition to that, the ordinance provides for a restitution for the acts of the minor by the parent in an amount up to $2,500 based on a court order. I think this ordinance will hopefully focus on the acts of some parents who simply ignore what their kids are doing and will encourage them to become more responsible for the acts of their minor children. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Has this been before us before?
We, I think we talked about it some time ago, and we had a similar one, and what resulted out of those discussions was the chronic nuisance properties. We came up with that ordinance, and then now we're bringing back this part of it.
So let me get this right.
And we also, I think we also have some laws in our graffiti ordinance that make the parents responsible for that.
So a 17-year-old boy goes out and does something wrong, and we're gonna criminalize the parent for allowing it to happen?
Yes, but it...
Are we out of our minds?
No. Yes.
Wait a minute. Anybody have a 17-year-old boy? I mean, once they leave the house, you don't know what they're doing.
They'll never leave the house.
Like I said, anybody have a 17-year-old boy?
It sounds great.
All right, go ahead. You guys got discussion? I mean, you're writing this to say allow, which, what does that mean? I mean, we're just gonna criminalize parents because, just because?
They're not taking responsibility.
Wait a minute, you're not allowed to talk. I get to talk. You get to come up and talk when it's your turn. All right, let's hear it.
Well, you know, we brought this up as part of a whole package back probably about three years ago, as excessive nuisance and things that have worked in other cities. This program was implemented in Norwalk pretty successfully. What it does, it doesn't criminalize the parent on the first time, but they start getting letters, and they start getting, you know, visits from the Sheriff's Department saying, "Look, this is the first time, this is the second time I think we have in this ordinance." After the fourth time is what's the...
There's a presumption of lack of supervision after the fourth offense in 90 days.
Progressive action.
Right, progressive action. But unlike in Norwalk, and we had talked about implementation, which isn't necessarily here in the ordinance to give us the ability to see what works, is a letter could come from the city attorney's office from...
Actually, it comes from the sheriffs.
The sheriff's department saying, you know, "This child is out of control." The juvenile system here has sometimes become a revolving door. We've had, you talk to the sheriff's department, juvenile crime has on the upswing over the number of years. The juvenile detentions is overcrowded. They actually picked up one kid on a burglary that had his ankle bracelet on him. So this is something that has worked in other cities, and if, you know, there are certain parents that just don't control their kids. Other parents, they happen to be a criminal element also. And I think if those that are allowing their kids that happen to have that type of behavior, if you put them under a microscope, they don't want to live in a community like what we have. We pumped up how many cops are on the street. We have other excessive nuisance ordinance. It just makes it uncomfortable for that type of people that are living here that are causing our citizens fear.
Wait a minute, whenever I hear words like "that type of people," let's be more specific.
Okay, criminals. Is that more specific, criminals?
Okay, define a criminal. What about a misdemeanor? What about being home after 10 o'clock? I mean, let's have some, you know, quite frankly, that type of person that doesn't want to live in a city like this would probably include your mayor. I mean, for heaven's sakes, if you're gonna do something like that, have some specificity to it. This is...
Well, Mr. Mayor, what's your specific definition of a crime?
Well, it's your ordinance.
Right, a crime.
Wait a minute. Okay, Mr. Smith, you're so knowledgeable about this, why don't you pull the penal code out and see how thick it is? It is this thick.
It's actually about that.
No, it is this thick when you add all the cases interpreting it to it. I got it in my office, okay?
You want to add the case law to it, that's fine.
All right, you're asking the parents to now all of a sudden be subject to being criminalized because of what their teenage children do when the parents have no ability to abandon these children? I mean, let's face it, there are a lot of juveniles out of control, and to assume that we're gonna turn the parents into criminals rather than doing something to help them control these kids is asinine. It's just asinine to, I mean, I remember when I was 17 years old, "Mom, you're going to jail." I mean, I mean, we, really, you'd be in jail, wouldn't you? You know, there's, she had four kids, she's raising them by themselves, she's a waitress and working three to 11. You're gonna make her a criminal because what we're doing while she's at work? I mean, most of these kids come from single-parent homes, and we're now going to say that your kid gets in trouble, all of a sudden if the cop doesn't like you, you get to be a criminal too? I'm sorry, this is America. We are just going too far. What about speeding? I mean, how many speeding tickets did I get? I got lots. You're a criminal, you gotta go to jail. I mean, we're talking about making it a misdemeanor. She has to go to jail for six months because I don't know how to drive. This is nonsense. I mean, I'm sorry.
Mayor Paris, can I just make a comment? I know that for far too long, there have been parents that have not tried to control their kids. And I know that there are, there's a process to it. It's not, you get slapped down once, you know, by one time. There's a process to it.
You get three chances.
And there are other places where people can go, and they can get help for their kids, they can get counseling for themselves, how they can be a better parent. I just think that it's time that we make the parents responsible for the kids' actions. And far too long, I mean, they give their kid 10 bucks, send them to the, you know, downtown or wherever they want to go, there's no supervision.
Most of these kids don't have 10 bucks.
And that's all we're doing is asking, well, you know what? There's a lot that do, and the parents will give them 10 bucks just to get them out of the house, too. I see it as just a tool.
Has the sheriff's department weighed in on this? Do we have what their opinion is?
Yeah, actually, part of the sheriff's department is what started me on this, and they gave me information from the city of Norwalk.
Mayor, I can answer that if you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We did review with the sheriff's department for the way to implement this. We would implement it if it's the council's decision, similar to how we implement the nuisance property ordinance, which is, we're notified, we would send a letter, and at the end of the progressive period, it would be decided and charges would be filed if it fell under this ordinance.
Because we got so much jail space? Axel, come on up here, I want to talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, it does not provide for jail. It provides only for up to a $500 fine.
Okay, and so what happens when this...
And possible restitution.
And what happens when this mother doesn't pay the $500 because she doesn't have it? She goes to jail.
No, that's incorrect. In criminal court, if you can't afford to pay the fine, that doesn't put you in jail.
That's not the court I watch every day when I go over there. That is not the court I watch. I mean, I see people going to jail all the time for not paying their fines.
It's part of probation, probation violation.
Why don't we hear from Axel? I'd like to hear from him, and then maybe even to give us some feedback on the previous ordinance that we passed, because this is very similar to the nuisance ordinance, is it not? So I'd be interested to find out how that's running. Very simple.
If you could, Axel, also give us some information. When we first started talking about this, this was a package of excessive nuisance...
You can ask him the questions.
Am I not being interrupted while I ask him the question?
No, you can't, because I invited him up here, and you're not gonna frame this around the way you want it. What I've asked for is the opinion of the sheriff's department on this particular ordinance. If you have specific questions after he gives it, you can ask him. But what you do is you frame these things with language that sounds all nice and good, "We're gonna make parents accountable." What we're really going to do is we're going to provide a vehicle so that certain parents can get targeted and certain parents can find themselves going to jail for kids they can't control. And you even said it, those types of people. And everybody in this room knows what he's talking about. Every single one of us know what he's talking about, and it's not gonna happen in our city. Now, I'd like to hear what the sheriff's department, how they honestly think they're going to be able to enforce this, and if you are endorsing this.
Well, I can't say whether or not the sheriff's department's endorsing this. We do have one station that I know of that is operating a program like this, Norwalk Station, and I can tell you, I know the captain down there very well, and he seems to favor the program. He does believe that it does give parents some extra incentives, so to speak, to do a better job of supervising their kids. But as far as my personal experience with this type of law, I couldn't give you an opinion. But I do know that the captain at Norwalk Station has said good things about it in various meetings.
Do we have any stats about how many parents have been arrested, how many parents have been fined, how many parents have failed to pay the fines, what the ramifications of this are to those parents?
I don't have those, but I can get them for you if you'd like to take a look at them.
I'd certainly like to take a look at them before we jump into this thing. I mean, it sounds good, but when you actually look at the implementation of it, it is, I mean, is that really the city we want to live in, that we're gonna start putting, criminalizing parents for stuff they don't even know that happened? Well, you know, it's not the city I want to live in.
Mayor Paris, can I just say that when Vice Mayor Smith says "they," what instantly comes to my mind are parents that are not controlling their children and not looking for help on ways to learn how to control their kids. I don't know what "they" that you're referring to, but I'm referring to the parents that need to control their kids. And we see far too many kids roaming the streets, they don't have supervision, and that's what I'd like to see done. So I'm all for it.
And we currently do have a truancy program associated with our burglary suppression team. And I can tell you that the truancy deputies have been very, very productive in slowing down burglaries and various other crimes that are attributable to kids who are running around the street with no supervision.
Don't we have curfew laws for that? We have all kinds of laws in place now. I mean, you really think this is going to improve the situation?
Yeah.
Well, I'm asking the captain of the sheriff's department.
You know, I think that it has possibilities, I really do. I agree with you, Mayor, that we've got to be very careful about this and implementing it, and I do think that the parents deserve a chance as opposed to threatening to send them to jail or fine them over the behavior of their kids. They need several chances, they need maybe even an opportunity to go to some sort of counseling to help them be better parents. But I think in the final analysis, from a moral standpoint, I don't have a problem with the city asking parents to please be responsible for the children that you've produced.
But that's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is taking... What we're talking about is taking people and saying if they allow something to occur. Now, what does that mean? I mean, if you let the kid out of the house, haven't you allowed anything that happens? And I don't know, I just think that we write these laws that are so broad and so meaningless. I mean, I would doubt anybody, I cannot imagine the DA prosecuting this. I mean, it's kind of like we're doing stuff to make us look good, but has no basis in reality. I mean, do you guys really have the time to do this? That's the other thing.
Well, you know, as we enact ordinances and things, we have to make time for it. If the council feels that it's important enough to enact something like this, then we're going to find the time and find the resources to do the best job we possibly can.
Well, in this instance, when you have parents that have, has a child, that is a constant problem, I know the VITA program, is it VITA or how do you pronounce it?
Yeah, it's VITA.
VITA program. I know that I've talked to several parents that their kids were giving them problems and they contacted VITA and they said, "That program saved those kids' lives."
Absolutely.
Because when they don't have supervision, they're out there, they're endangering their own lives, too. So I would think it would go hand in hand.
Well, how does this relate to the VITA program? I mean, we already do the letters about the VITA program.
For the parents that would look for help with a child.
And it could be that, and I know that part of the point that the captain down at Norwalk Station is talking about is, it does help encourage these parents to find some alternatives as opposed to just, I don't have time for this. So, but he seems to have positive feelings about it.
Has this law gone up? I mean, has the court reviewed this law at all?
You know, I couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you for sure, Mayor.
I mean, aren't we just walking into another... All right, you guys do what you want to do, but I think this is ridiculous. Thanks.
Well, is the issue with the verbiage "allow"?
Yes, I think it's way too broad. I think that if you get specific as to what type of conduct we're talking about and we're specific about when they're warned about it and the process that goes through it, but I'm telling you, the way this law is written, my mom needs to go to jail.
It's too late, Rex, we can't do that. It's too late, the statute's run out.
Yeah. Well, I just know that I, as a parent, I had two children and I felt very responsible for their actions when they were away from home. We had the talk every time they left the house and we just talked about if you get yourself in trouble, you're going to be even in more trouble when you get home. And I just think that that, people need to start parenting their kids again. I think we moved away from parenting. I think people need to be encouraged to parent. I mean, there's all kinds of help out there. The cities give help on these issues. There's all kinds of nonprofits out there that want to help with these issues. They need to go and get help for themselves and their kids if they need to. And a lot of times, they're not going to unless they get a visit from the sheriff's department. So I just think it would be a help in this situation.
Does the city have any parenting classes?
We have certain classes through our parks and rec and we do refer. I can't specifically answer if we have any parenting classes.
The city did offer that at one point, I think in conjunction with the city of Palmdale also. And that used to take place one night a week in the EOC. They would offer those classes, but it's been a long time since those have been offered.
What was the attendance for those classes?
It was based on a referral, if I recall correctly. I would say there were about twenty people in each class. Parents were required to attend, if I remember correctly.
Maybe that's something that we need to look at again.
We can certainly look at that.
You guys do what you want to do. I would suggest that we send this back and tighten it up and make it specific so that it doesn't include anybody we don't like that has an unruly child. I mean, it is just way too nonspecific for me. It offends my sense of due process. It offends my sense of what the American Constitution is about. It is just so broad. I mean, it would include traffic.
This is what I exactly used to tell my children when they were junior and senior in high school. If you start getting into trouble, I will quit my job and I will stay at home and I will sit on top of you. I will go to your classrooms with you. That's just part of being a parent.
But you were a great mom.
Very mean mom.
But, you know, there are a lot of single parents out there with multiple children and a lot of those single parents work. I mean, what are, I mean, yeah, this works perfect for me and my wife, but it would not have worked perfectly for my mom. I mean, she was a single mom who worked. She, when were you going to do this? You know, I mean, it was, there's realities.
You would have had to build a cage. And if you had to build a cage to put your son in it to keep him safe and to keep you out of trouble, I know you would have done it.
So locking the kids up is a crime. Seriously. And you know, do you know in the county of Los Angeles, if you spank your child, they will take your children away from you? You know, let's be real about this. The laws in this county that'll even allow you to control your kids are not the laws that we raised our kids on.
Well, let me clarify, too. That was in a pun. I would never condone anybody putting their kid in a cage. Absolutely not. I'd be the first one there to come to their rescue.
I think parents need a lot of help. I certainly think that there's a lot of problems with the way children are being raised. But I just don't see adding a crime to it is going to help it. I mean, we've got to start getting reasonable and really, you spank your child in Los Angeles County, they will take your child. And it takes you about six months to get them back, sometimes a year, it will bankrupt you. It's, this, I just do not think that this is the way to resolve a problem. This is a way for us to feel good, to say we did something, that we're demanding people be accountable and on we go, knowing that it's going to have almost no effect. If we're going to tackle this, let's tackle it. Let's figure out a way to have a child welfare program in regards to raising them and teaching parents how to parent them that would have some meaning. But I just don't see that this is it. But if you're going to do it, I think you have to do it so that it's specific. I mean, David, do you think this even passes constitutional muster?
I think it could be tightened. I think the language could certainly be tightened a lot.
And that's what I would suggest you do, is you send this back and make it so it's specific and make it so it's enforceable.
The ordinance is patterned after the Norwalk ordinance and that ordinance has been working. However, I think, you know, in listening to the discussion, I think there's certainly some areas that we could improve upon the Norwalk language and make it very specific to address the real problems that we're faced with.
So may I ask, suggest maybe what we ought to do is then table it for thirty days? Not that I'm looking for a five oh vote or a four one or whatever. And then maybe at the same time have Axel get us the, get like a recap on how things are going in Norwalk? Because I'm a firm believer, today is much different, no offense, Rex, today is much different today than it was when you and I were growing up, even though you're a couple of years ahead of me.
Very proud of it.
And...
Two, two.
And I think that we ought to turn every stone over to make this city run right. And any tools that we can give the sheriff's department for better control without victimizing the parents in this particular case for your concern. So I can't see why it wouldn't hurt for us to wait thirty days and get some feedback from Norwalk. Be interesting to find out, have Axel go back and get us kind of a recap of, from the sheriff's department's point of view. Maybe Ron hit, maybe he's hit a home run and we're just, you know, we really don't know that he did.
Works for me. Can we work for you?
Well, see, I get a chance to speak again. So, yeah, when you frame it as you get a speeding ticket and your mom goes to jail, yeah, that's pretty ridiculous. And we're writing the ordinance so it gives us the flexibility and it's in the implementation, just like in our nuisance ordinance. You know, when we have landlords that have problem tenants, we don't ding them with the fine. We say, okay, look, we'll send you through LandCap, we'll help you on the evictions and we help assist it. It's another tool in the toolbox. This was brought as a whole package, the nuisance ordinance. In fact, I think Mr. Drico was one of them that brought it to me at a probation hearing about three and a half years ago. And so it does, as the captain, as Axel said, the captain in Norwalk does see it as another tool that he can use for juvenile crime. But, you know, if you want to look at it and see how it can be tightened up, that's fine. I'm all good with tightening up the ordinance, but I think the basic premise of it is still valid.
Take it off calendar till it's rewritten?
Well, I'll move that we bring it back in thirty days.
Would you like us to bring it back, taking this discussion plus the statistics from Norwalk is what I'm hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Also, if there's been any challenges to it.
Okay, we will do that.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. Moving on. Oh, should have waited for this one. CA item one. Who wants to present?
Well, this is another tool, I guess you would say, that sort of sets the tone for what the city has been doing for the past three years. We started off with making it a policy that we don't accept any contracts with outside contract services unless they use all US legal workers. We don't accept matricular councilor cards. We also have been implementing e-Verify. And the whole key is that while I understand that there's people on other sides of the issue, on both sides of the issue, that are passionate about this, this is truly, in my position, a public safety issue. Let me, I have a memo here from Mike Antonovich. And this is from his office. And he says that when you add the $540 million that's spent for public safety and $500 million for healthcare, the total cost for illegal immigrants and county taxpayers far exceeds $1 billion a year. Now, in my mind, and the reason why all these, I started bringing these things up probably about three years ago. I was, be clear, I was watching this newscast, this show, and they were talking about the impact of illegal aliens on our healthcare system. And they were showing this hospital that was the tenth busiest in the United States and number two in the state of California, spending six to seven million dollars a month because of the impact of illegal aliens on their hospital. And then all of a sudden, Mr. Murchabigeen came on the screen and was being interviewed. It was actually Antelope Valley Hospital. And that's what I said, you know, if you have that impact, how is that affecting our families when they go to the hospital? How is it affecting our schools, our public safety, our fire departments, the number one busiest squad in LA County? And when you talk to the firemen, they'll say, people know what to say, hey, I got chest pain, I got this, they go to the hospital and they really have a cold. Then the hospital has to pay to take them by ambulance or taxi back to their house. Mike Antonovich has been doing this for a number of years, showing the cost of this. If you become what everybody's coined as a sanctuary city where you look the other way and you say it's a safe harbor here, that's the impact on the community, the citizens that were elected to protect and the people that are here legally. So if we let it be known, this is not a safe haven, that we support a rule of law, I think that's just another tool to say, look, go to another city, but not here.
Ms. Marcus was the other person on there. Anyone else?
Well, I said a couple of city council meetings ago that I was 100% behind the state of Arizona and Jan Brewer and what they were doing with SV 1070. And I will stand by that. The Arizona's law, SB or the proposed, simply codifies current law, federal law into state law. Rule of law, as I understand it, the federal government is not following and enforcing the laws that they already have on the books. And we've been waiting for a long time for them to do something about this. The way I've described illegal immigration is that one time, we had an infant of a problem and now we have a raging teenager and nobody knows how to deal with it. There's a parental notification for you. But I am 100% behind it, I'll stand behind it. And one thing, I will quote Antonovich, Mr. Antonovich here, "Illegal immigration requires federal action to enforce the border and end the cradle to grave incentives to those who knowingly break the law." That is the crooks of this. It's illegal. It's illegal to cross the border. If we cross Mexico's border and we get caught, we go to jail for two years. If we go back to the United States, cross the border again, then it's an immediate ten years in jail. That's what I have understood. It's got to go both ways. It can't just go one way. And now's the time to just take the opportunity to support Arizona and Governor Brewer and to proclaim that we are a rule of law city, that we are not a sanctuary city and that we would like Sheriff Baca to follow through with his statement that he would help with the ICE training. And I think it's just time. A May Pew Research poll found that 73% of Americans support the Arizona law and I support it 100%.
You know, the problem I have is nobody gave me the Arizona law to read. How many people here have actually read the law? You certainly understand where I would like to read it before I vote on it. And it certainly wasn't attached to this. And you know, what I would really like to ask is how does this benefit Lancaster? How do us weighing in on an Arizona law benefit Lancaster? I met with the sheriff on Friday and the sheriff said, "This isn't going to happen. The Arizona law is not going to be enforced in the county of Los Angeles." So how does this benefit Lancaster? I mean, I think we have to know that before, I mean, Sherry, I know that from the day I met you, this has really been a heartfelt concern of yours. No question in my mind that you are absolutely sincere and we have different views of this issue. And so I, you know, I understand why you're bringing this.
Well, Mayor Paris, let me say this, that it truly has been, from other citizens and myself, and it is a very emotional situation, but I really do feel that the American people have been neglected and have been at the bottom of the totem pole for too long. Just talking about the unsustainable monies that go towards situations that illegals, the health, the welfare, the crime situation, it's not sustainable. And there are American people that are at risk right now because of this situation. We're in trouble financially. The state of California, if they had enough guts to just clean up the welfare, the social programs and to just follow through with the federal law, we would not have the problems we have in the state of California. And it's just time as a city to stand up and be counted and stand up for the American people. That's really where I am with it.
You know, I certainly agree that citizens should have priority on everything. I certainly agree that people who are not citizens should not have free healthcare, should not have welfare benefits. I absolutely agree with that. I absolutely agree that people who are not citizens should not be allowed to be employed in the city of Lancaster. But I have grave concerns about really adopting a policy that takes parents from American citizen children and tearing those, and they are hardworking families in the most instances that I'm aware of, and tearing those parents away from those children or telling them that they, that American citizen children have to be raised in another country. Because that is the reality of it. You know, the reality of it is, is that we wanted these people to come not so many years ago. That's why the borders were so porous, the government did. The American agribusiness wanted them to, the stockyards wanted them to. There were a lot of political forces that allowed that border to be open. And so now we have a situation where these children are citizens of the United States. And it is hard for me to get behind, again, something that is so encompassing. And it's also my understanding that that particular bill has a provision in it that gives the, anybody attempting to enforce it, whether they're right or wrong, I mean, they could think that an American citizen, because he is Hispanic, qualifies and arrests him... and arrests him, that there is no civil accountability for that. There, there's absolute immunity for that. You know, we, we are going down a dangerous path here, and, and I think we should be far more specific in, in what we're saying.
Well, let me read.
And, and, and on top of that, let me finish. On top of that, what, you know, I've never been called a wuss before. Is that what he said? Yeah. That has never been applied to me before. The, the, and then I have to ask, as counsel for Lancaster, doesn't this alienate a lot of groups against us that we need? You know, yesterday, on the paper, it was the Solar City, at the bottom of the fold. At the top of the fold is how we were going to go after the Hispanics. I mean, look, look, look at that. I mean, this, this is the city, this is the city I want. And I understand that this is the city some of you want. But I have a city where 17% of the people are unemployed. And we have to do something dramatic to get jobs, to get manufacturers, and to attract as many people as we can. And we cannot do that by playing a game of hate. We just can't. There are people that can block what things that we desperately need to do. Who was the, who was the, the, the person from the governor's office, from the Economic Development Department, that we vitally need?
Joy Ayala.
What was his last name?
Ayala.
I wonder how Mr. Ayala feels about this type of, of unnecessary. I mean, if you were telling me we were passing a law that we were going to enforce, that meant something, that we were going to do something, I mean, let's pass a law saying that no undocumented person can go to the emergency room at Antelope Valley Hospital. And let's put our deputies there enforcing that. Let's do something that actually has some meaning, rather than something that just makes people angry at us. This thing is, is causing a lot of people to get really angry, and we need those people. You are asking us to slow down on bringing the jobs here. I have no doubt that once we, we send this message out, that, that, that we, I mean, there's such racial overtones to it. I can't, and you can't, and you can't control what people think about this.
Mayor Paris, you've said that, you've said the word hate. I will let you know, there's no hate in my heart towards anybody.
I know there's none in yours.
Okay.
But I know that there's a lot of hate in a lot of people's heart in Arizona that are using this law.
I don't know that that's true either, Mayor Paris, but I will tell you this, is that I believe it is a public safety issue. I do believe in my heart that Americans are to come first, and the federal government has not put them first in many, many years. And I think that we can start something, and start a trend here. I'm sorry for those people that chose to bring, to come over the, the border illegally, have children here, and put their kids in that position. You once said to me, if, if my husband or I had wanted to feed our kids, we would have been the first ones over the border. And I can tell you, that is not how I feel about it. And I always believed it is never right to do wrong to do right.
I, I will always do whatever's necessary to feed my children, so we have a basic disagreement.
Well, let me just retitle eight of the United States Code of Section 1304E states that every alien 18 years of age and over shall at all times carry with him and have in his personal possession any certificate of alien registration or alien registration receipt card issued to him. Further, the law expressly prohibits racial profiling. That is something that's thrown out there every time. That is not true. They are not allowed to do that. They cannot racially profile. They can only stop someone that they believe is breaking the law, and then follow from there.
So, all right, you, you've got the crowd, they're all happy, you're going to pass this. But what does it do? What is, what is the effect of it? What is the effect, what is the, zero. Nobody enforces this. This is a senseless act. There is not going to be one thing that changes in Lancaster as a result of us passing this, not one. The, the only thing it's going to do is make it more difficult for us to do what we're doing out there in trying to build this city into something magnificent. This becomes another obstacle. And if somebody were to be able to tell me, one thing would change as a result of this. And remember, I was the one that voted for and was a proponent of the e-Verify system that only documented workers could work in the city of Lancaster. It is not like I'm saying that undocumented workers should be allowed to work here. I'm saying they should not. But what I'm saying is, do not make it any harder for us. Do not make it any harder for the staff to bring businesses into this city to create jobs. And I am telling you that that's exactly what this is going to do. There are people out there who are so committed to this issue, they will vote against Lancaster because of this. I have no doubt at all that that is going to happen. And right now, I need those people to say yes, to turn, to turn this city around. That's it. Do whatever you want to do. Well, let's have the speakers come up and tell me what, what they want to tell me. I've heard it before.
May I say one, one other thing, Mayor Paris?
Yes.
I believe that in, in light of public safety, when we put the message out there that this is going to be one of the safest cities in America, we're going to have people swarming to Lancaster.
That's correct. And if this, but let's be clear. Let's, let's not be patting ourselves on the back about something that isn't going to, that this is not going to affect. Axel Anderson's deputies are not going to do one thing different after this is passed. Isn't that correct, Axel? Not one thing different. We are not any safer at all because of this. What we are, is we are disempowered out there in the marketplace because of this. And, okay, I understand that there is a group of people that want to get behind the Arizona governor and want to make this a partisan, and you're not one of them. I know that you're not. I know that in your heart, you absolutely are there. But there are others using this as a partisan issue, and it does not help the city of Lancaster. And, and I'm telling you, folks, we have got to come together and build this city because we are this close to seeing something magnificent happen. This sets it back.
So one comment on the, on the unemployment. I mean, you talked about we're having a high percentage of unemployment, and, and yes, that's another issue too, besides the public safety. You know, those jobs should go to hard-working American citizens or legal immigrants that are here. And with every, with every resolution that we pass, it doesn't, it doesn't change, a resolution doesn't change the, the effect of how Axel Anderson does his job, or city staff does their job, but it does change the tenor of what type of city we have, any legislation that we support or we oppose. What this does is gives out the message, this is not the safe harbor, if you are illegal, to be. With everything else that we've done, the resolution says more in there than just the support of the Arizona law, but to, for us to move forward and do everything we can to, to affect that.
So we, we still come back to, don't you think that, have you read it, Marlon?
No.
Have you read it? Don't you think we ought to read the law before we start voting on it? And that's exactly why we're having the problems we're having, is because these people are voting on things they have not read. You know, there isn't any doubt in my mind that we would be a much stronger country if the people who were elected had at least read the things they're voting on. Now, Tammy Fields, Tammany Fields, come on up here.
Why am I first?
Because I like you.
Finally. Because I, I, I don't know. I'm for it because, yes, it was only 300 pages to read, and our lovely president can't read 300 pages. Too busy playing golf, I guess. I'm for it because, like Sherry had mentioned, the safety issue, we live on the border of Lancaster, Palmdale, and Quartz Hill. And there's oftentimes flower vendors there, and they're urinating in the bushes, which aren't very good bushes, as we know. It's, it's just a rocks throw from my house, and one of my children happened to see this happen. I called the sheriffs. The sheriffs came out immediately, took their, their flowers and their cut-up fruit, and sent him on his way. I don't know if they verified who or what he was, or where he was from, or whatever, but there's a safety issue. Some years ago in Palmdale, little girl walking home from school was raped by an illegal immigrant right there in the bushes across from the elementary school on R. And what a horrific thing for that, I believe she was seven years old. This is all the time. Home Depot, sure was nice to drive past Home Depot the other day and not see any people there soliciting business. I don't even go to Home Depot, whether it's Lancaster or Palmdale, because I've experienced that every time I have gone there, where if I didn't stop and speak with them, I was called a waiter or other not-so-nice things, because I wasn't willing to take their business. Obviously, I'm going to Home Depot or to Lowe's because I'm doing it myself. I support it, not because of the bipartisan thing, but I actually think it would make Lancaster much safer to come to, and we might even get rid of some pitfalls. So, that's my point.
Thank you, Tammy. Darlene, come on down.
We're going to be sorry.
Darlene, I can't agree with you on everything.
That's why.
I mean, every now and then, we disagree. What can I say?
I never thought I'd agree with, with Ron Smith, but.
You see how the world turns.
Well, I'm agreeing with him tonight. He's got his act together, and I think you need to have a tutoring.
Tutoring.
You need to be straightened out because, number one, we don't have to read all of that stuff. If we start and have the backbone now and tell those people, don't come across the border if you're illegal, let's not talk about the kids they have over there. If we say, from this point on, you come over here, if you have children here, they're not going to be citizens. The ones that are here, okay, but from this point on, it's not going to be that way any longer. And we have to have the guts to stand up and say, we're going to start the ball rolling, we're going to support Arizona, and I'm all for it. And I don't care about reading all this. We know the Congress can't read. I've written them off as hopeless, really hopeless. Now, don't make, you, don't make yourselves look hopeless. So far, we've got two up there, for sure. I know there's hope for them. But you, I'm not sure about. I think you need to get over this tearing the families apart. We're not trying to tear the families apart. We're trying to keep these people from crossing into the border, crossing the border. We've got to start someplace. Let's start there. Is that all right?
Darlene, do you have?
I want to mention one thing about punishing these juveniles. Bring them in here and make them attend some of these council meetings. They'll straighten up, because if that, if that isn't punishment, I don't know what is.
Darlene.
Yes?
Darlene, do you have any doubt that I love this city more than life itself? Any doubt at all?
No, I don't have any doubt. I think you're just kind of going astray. You kind of fell off the track because you're talking out of both sides of your mouth now.
Okay.
You really are.
Thank you.
And, and I think you should, I think you ought to shape up, I really do.
Thank you, Darlene.
And I'm putting that.
Lindy Williams?
Make note.
That's because your mom parented you.
Oh, I wanted to mention, when my son was growing up, I asked him one time, how come you never gave me any trouble and you turned out to be a good kid? He says, because I was afraid to be anything else. So, and you take that, you remember that.
Mom, I was never afraid of you.
Thank you, council members. Right on, Rex. Anyway, I would just like to say, I am not in favor of anyone here breaking the law and profiting. However, if we make little cards, and I know we can't do this, but hypothetically speaking, if we make little cards to say, I'm a Lancaster resident, U.S. citizen, so on and so forth, and not accept their money at the Walmart, not sell them a car, not sell them a house. Now, you know, I can barely keep my health insurance. It's horrible. But it's called capitalism. And other people have figured out how to capitalize. With that being said, we have to choose. Because I will pick onions for $10, anybody. I do really need a job, okay? That'll work. But with that, if we are not willing to really and truly put our money where our mouth is, which means we accept nothing from them, and anyone who has business with those foreign Canadians, or whoever else we may be talking about, then I suggest that you don't sell them the house, and if you have, they have to move, and the bank takes the hit. And they can't go to the Walmart, or get gas, or anything else. Because what we're talking, I agree with our mayor, it's wrong, and it is going to isolate, not unite. So if you really want to do it, go after the business owners that hire them, okay? And find them. Because I tell you what, if I'm breaking the law and you come to my business and you find me, guess what? They can't work here anymore. And then when that happens, I'll have a job, because I will take it. Stop preaching hate, unite. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not a public speaker, can't speak without notes. I thought this was very important for me and my family, my family's future, to speak about this. You know, I drove here in my car, where I drive for the driver's license, because it's mandated by the government. I also, you know, pay insurance on my car, because it's mandated by the government. I pay sales tax, pay federal income tax, because it's something I need to do. Well, I was running a little late, I obeyed most of the law traffic, you know, traffic laws. Also, you know, it's just curious, you know, that the current administration had a problem with those party crashers back at the state dinner. You know, but they give them free dinner and free healthcare, you know, housing and all that kind of stuff. It's, there's a little dichotomy there. The other side of it is, you know, you said something, you know, on the last thing offended you, offended your sense of something, I can't remember your phraseology, but this offends my sense of patriotism. It's not hate, it's not against a particular race or a particular, you know, people group. It's against illegal immigration. We have, you know, friends that, the wife is Irish, she had to go back to her home country to get through the process to get here illegally. How, how does that make her feel? She could have stayed here and broke the law. So I just encourage all five of you to vote yes on this resolution. No, it's not an ordinance, no, the sheriff's department's not going to do anything, it's a resolution. And I thoroughly, you know, encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you for having me here. I guess I'm going to be the only Hispanic here that's opposed against this, but actually, I am a citizen of the United States. I was born here in Indiana, and it is so hard just to have this kind of face. You know, I get discriminated by my own country, Mexicans, and I'm also discriminated by whites because I'm not white like them. But I'm a citizen. All my children were born here, I pay my taxes and everything. I have a deep sound because of my background, my parents, but I don't really believe that this is a good law, because it's going to bring out a lot of discrimination. I am a Realtor, and I just cannot see myself bringing my clients to Lancaster to show them properties and tell them, hey, guess what? We're going to show you properties in Lancaster, you better bring your passport, because we might get stopped over here. That is very, I'm sorry, I cannot say bad words. But I find it very uncomfortable, because if I don't bring my clients here, then that's going to bring another issue. All of us, the Realtors that are against this, we're just going to sell the properties in Palmdale or someplace else. What's going to happen with all the properties here in Lancaster? Are you ready to take all these foreclosures? Of course not. And all this money that, all that Hispanics bring, yet we want the money. What's happening? What's happening with the fairgrounds? They've been bringing a lot of Hispanic expense. Why? Because it brings a lot of money, right? The money is acceptable, but not the people. And I cannot have a law that is gonna be asking me and my kids for my passport if I get stopped by a cop. I know that you have your cops here being trained by immigration, and that's the issue that they come out with. They're not gonna stop you because you break the law. They're gonna stop you because you're Hispanic.
Thank you. Denise Josephson?
Thank you for letting me speak today. I have a prepared statement, so bear with me.
Okay.
Since before the founding of this country, America has been a melting pot of peoples who simply wanted a better life. Many sacrifices were made, and many lives were lost in the forming of this great country. America's boundaries were established, both physically and politically. A well-designed federal government was created, and rules were established for that government. One of the few responsibilities assigned to the federal government by the Constitution was the protection of our borders. The federal government has failed miserably in its responsibility to both citizens and immigrants. It has become bloated with politicians who care more about their own power than the people they represent or the oath they took before God. The federal government continues in leaving huge gaps in our border protection, despite the exorbitant amount in taxes it takes from the people. And in attempting to protect itself from scrutiny, the federal government accuses the melting pot of this great United States of being racist, stirring up hatred and anger among the people. I see this as being nothing less than evil. I am angry today, but not at illegal immigrants, most of whom are simply seeking a better life. I am angry at our federal government, who year after year, and administration after administration, chooses to leave our borders permeable. We should not be here today discussing this. This issue should not need to be a part of today's agenda. All along, immigrations—immigrants, excuse me—should have been occurring legally, so that law-abiding individuals would know the joy of becoming citizens while dangerous felons were kept out. By ignoring the borders, the federal government has encouraged entry by the drug cartel, who now has a lucrative business between Mexico and the U.S. By ignoring our borders, our federal government has indirectly aided the cartel and thereby helped to create the hell that people are living in on both sides of the border. Mexicans and Americans are both paying for the ineptness of our government. Our government also carries with it indirect but significant responsibility for kidnappings and lives lost in this ongoing drug battle. Our federal politicians should be ashamed. So what do we do now? Do we support Arizona, or do we stand on the side of the same federal government that puts peaceful people at odds with each other for the sake of political boas or personal agendas? This is a horrible choice to have to make, and I realize I can only be an influence in this matter. But I can no longer agree with the evil that continually pits people against each other. I must side with Arizona, and I ask the city to do the same. To finalize, I am hoping and praying that all those that are affected by the situation will put the blame squarely where it belongs—not on the people, for we are all equal in God's eyes, but upon the federal government who sees itself as a god, we, citizens and illegal immigrants alike, being its pawns in a game for its own profit. God bless America and all the people who reside here. Thank you.
Ron Isatito?
Tydel. My name is Ron Tydel. I'm a resident of Lancaster. I am the coordinator of Antelope Valley Tea Party Patriots. I graduated high school here in 1964. Makes me old. I'm a Vietnam vet and a friend of the city. Basically, I want to start out by prefacing the fact that I urge unanimous vote from the board here to say yes to 1054. I think it's a wise thing to do. I took notes of you talking, Rex, and some of it troubles me a little bit. I think that perhaps maybe you're hung up a little bit too much on the emotional side of it rather than the legal side of it. I think this whole thing takes a turn to the legal side of it, because we try to earmark it with approval of Arizona and SB 1070, when in fact, what it should all be about is law. And, you know, my way of looking at the whole situation is that, you know, the law is clear. It's been there on the books forever. Let's forget about Arizona for a second. Let's just look at the law. And to me, there's no political correct word for unlawful, unless it's a blatant lie. Unlawful is unlawful. If you're coming into this country and you're illegal, you are not undocumented. You're illegal. I don't know where all this comes from. This political talk, you know, the correctness, it's ridiculous. Let's take the emotion out of the situation. I can get very hung up and very emotional about the fact that there are youngsters involved in this whole unfortunate circumstance, but the bottom line is, is that their parents are here illegally. They chose to be here illegally, and it should be dealt with. So I think we need to deal with the law. We need to enforce the law that we have and do a good job of it. I don't think that that makes Lancaster unusual. I think it makes it steadfast. And, you know, you know, some may agree that we should rewrite the law, and I agree with them 100%. Rewrite the law. But the law that we have stands. We need to obey that law in spite of what the consequences are. That's what America's all about. We have a rule of law. We live to that law, or we change the law. We don't ignore it.
Scott Brown? Scott Brown?
Oh, I think he's the guy who called me the wuss.
Mr. Talbot? Lyle Talbot? Andrew Nieto?
I like the comment that that one lady made about finding something we can unite around. One word: Constitution. I've heard that word mentioned once tonight. I'm very much disappointed by that. I think we all can unite around the Constitution. That's the very foundation of our government, of our body of laws. I have read the Arizona law. To the best of my understanding, the Fourth Amendment provides the words probable cause, and there are two conditions under which probable cause applies: one, being arrested, and two, being searched. The wording of the Arizona law does not concern being arrested. As a matter of fact, it actually says that you—that law enforcement can only question those who have already been arrested on some other charge. Now, as far as I understand, once you have been arrested, law enforcement can question you. They can question you about a great many things. The Constitution, to the best of my understanding, does not apply to being questioned once you've—excuse me, once you've already been arrested. The Arizona law also applies towards training for the law enforcement, so that they understand what exactly is profiling. The law specifically bans profiling. It simply says that once a person is arrested, that if the law enforcement has reasonable suspicion that they are not here legally, they can question them regarding their immigration status. I don't see that as being much different than a great many other practices that law enforcement already engages in. Now, as far as adopting an ordinance versus a resolution, that's a subject of its own debate. I understand perfectly your concern about the potential consequences of what we are doing. The city is doing a great many things, and certainly, they may be affected if we adopt this resolution. I leave that for you guys to decide. On the other side of the question is, somebody has to speak up. Somebody has to. Because the politically correct lobby has turned this issue into something it is not. It is not a question of race. It is not a question of anything of the sort, really. And they don't even bring up the Constitution, which disappoints me greatly. So what's before you here is deciding—and I will leave this to you to decide. I'm not gonna state my opinion on this—is it more important to make a stand, because nobody else has made the stand, or is it more important to preserve the contracts we already have underway?
I think I know which way you're going.
Which way? I'll give you a first chance.
I think you're in favor of the Arizona law.
Well, I am. But first of all, when I read the newspaper this morning, I was really—wow, I was elated. I couldn't get from one article to the other quick enough. And the first thing I think I read—if I read it correctly, I meant to go back and reread it—is that you're having solar put on your house.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I applaud you, because not only are you talking the talk, but you're walking the walk.
Thank you.
But then, when it comes to the parents' responsibility and with deciding to support Arizona, I thought about you. On one hand, I was hearing that ACLU attorney that we see in the newspaper all the time that combs his hair with an egg beater. On the one hand. And then Eric Holder, on the other hand. And I can't decide which one you are. I love you because you're a friend of my pastor, and I know he loves you and you love him. And I still support you in the things that you're for, but I don't know how—it seems almost that you're misguided about parents having responsibility. I'm glad your mom never got put in jail either, but I think there are some parents up here that not only are not taking care of their kids, I think they're the leading factor in why their kids are criminals. I think that their kids are learning by example. And I think those are the people, you know, that need to be put in jail. Wouldn't hurt me at all if any of them weren't put in jail. So for you to get upset with Mr. Smith about bringing that up, that's—I think that was over the edge. And then the thing about Arizona, yeah, you know, they're taking a bad hit. They've taken a bad hit from the president. They've taken a bad hit from Eric Holder. And they're taking a bad hit from everybody on the left that wants to bring up hate and profiling and everything. And I think Arizona needs some people behind them. And I say this with all seriousness and no animosity in my heart. I know and love a lot of illegal aliens. I wouldn't turn them in for money or for anything, but I think the thing that people really have said with is that nobody wants to stop the flow at the border.
That's right. Isn't that really what it is?
It's really—it's like the BP oil spill. The flow needs to be stopped.
I agree 100%.
And then you can deal with all the oil on the surface, and you can deal with all the people. But if you stop the flow, and then—it's only right to move the illegals out, and I don't think anybody needs to be profiled. And I think a lot of people would feel the same way. I think a lot of people would feel the same way about some of the real nice Hispanic people that we all know, and that maybe people wouldn't really want to see them deported. But I think stopping the flow and getting the criminals out is really important.
Thank you.
And I love you.
I love you, too.
Thank you.
You know, the thing that makes a great city is that we're able to disagree. We're able to disagree and have raucous debates about it, and that's what I love about what Lancaster is becoming. You know, we don't have to hate each other to disagree with what's happening.
But don't become that ACLU attorney.
I will never become that ACLU attorney. But, you know, Exodus tells me, "You shall not wrong or oppress a resident alien." For you were aliens in the land of Egypt. And I have trouble—I have trouble balancing all of this with that. I really do. And then, well, I'm late. I have to go give a talk at Lancaster Baptist. So whatever you guys decide, you will have to decide it without me.
But what I would—what I'd really like you to do is make sure we all read it before we vote on it.
Good night.
Let the director reflect that the mayor turned the chair over to me. So is there any other discussion? I'll move that we adopt resolution.
I didn't have a chance to speak.
Did you have a card in, ma'am?
Yes, I did.
I apologize. We'll blame it on the mayor that he didn't want you to speak, so—no, come on up. Come on.
Did we go through all the cards?
Yeah, but it might have just been a mistake and shuffled.
I'm sorry he left, because as an attorney, he took the oath to uphold the Constitution, as we all do, as citizens. However, let me read you the Fourteenth Amendment. Section 1, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without the process due of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the law." So states the Fourteenth Amendment. But let's call it as it is, the Emancipation Proclamation. So unless any alien has been here since July 28, 1868, he does not go under this law. How about that? And children born of foreigners or aliens who are under the jurisdiction of another nation, their children are also under the jurisdiction of that nation. The right of a nation to expel or deport foreigners who have not been naturalized or taken any steps towards becoming citizens of the country is absolute and unqualified as the rights to prohibit and prevent their entrance into the country. 149 U.S. 707, 13, Supreme Court, 1016. The Fifteenth Amendment provides that the right of citizens of the United States to vote. In providing born or naturalized in the United States, subject to the jurisdiction thereof, are citizens—the Fourteenth Amendment undoubtedly had particular reference to securing citizens to the members of the colored race, whose serval status had been obliterated by the Thirteenth Amendment, and who have not been born in the United States but were not and never have been subject to any foreign power. They were not aliens, and even if they could so regard this as collective naturalization. So what are we talking about? Here is the right to a United States immigration support. I'll give it to you. You can give it back. Here is the documentation. Here is what you can pick up on the Internet in Spanish, how to get into the United States, and all their embassies, telephone numbers, et cetera. Section 1, Rights Guaranteed Citizens. How about the Treaty of Hidalgo? You heard that. I'll give it to you. Make copies. Get educated. United States shall guarantee rights. Here's the Treaty of Hidalgo, and here's what you can pick up on the Internet.
Ma'am, I need you to take a sheet.
I filled out one also.
Oh, Fourteenth Amendment of the United—
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Did we miss another card? Who else? What was your name?
about that his mother, he's one parent. All I know is that driving is a privilege. If he had a father, and it's like my father, after one speeding ticket, my dad would have sold his car. So, you know, you can do things to children to get them back in line. You don't have to look the other way. Now, on this particular issue, I support Arizona law for a different reason. I retired because of medical reasons about four years ago, and I spent 25 years as manufacturing controllers, as a manufacturing controller, working down with 98% Hispanics around me, trying to figure out cost and all that stuff, and what can we do better? I worked for companies who said, "Tom, we're losing Hispanic employees. Why is that?" Well, it's because they can go to McDonald's and be treated better. I look at this from a humane standpoint of supporting Arizona's laws. I'd like the legal Hispanics who've been here longer than my family's been here, and they came over in the year 1631. But right now, big business doesn't want to do anything. The Democrats and Republicans don't want to do anything because they make money off of having a class of people in the United States that they can go ahead and treat the way they do. So I look at it from a different twist. I think people will be better off. Another comment, which I would say to Mr. Parrish, Parrish, is that he said, "What will this benefit the city?" I know we had a thing a year ago where we said, "We're going to keep prayer in the openings of our meetings." What benefit did that do for the city?
I could just give you about 10 more seconds.
Okay. First of all, and finally, I'd like to go ahead and state that 70 years ago, the United States had an isolation view on the World War II. We said, "We're not going to get involved." Somebody had to stand up in this country and start saying, "Hey, you know what? Jews are being killed over in Europe, and I'm Catholic. It's time to do something." All we're doing is just giving Arizona one little pat on the back saying, "Hey, thanks for having the guts to stand up, and we'll support you." Thank you.
Yeah. Final comment? Go ahead. Yeah, I've listened to the mayor and my fellow council members, both Sherry and Ron, speak. I haven't heard Marvin speak yet, but I want to give you a little bit of background. My thoughts about this is just purely symbolic. In fact, I didn't even give it much consideration about Arizona, because all they're wanting to do is see that the federal law gets upheld. I think I speak with a little more conviction in the fact that my wife is Hispanic. Her mother is from El Salvador. Her father's from Mexico. And they paid the price and came to this country legally. I've done over 40 medical missions to Mexico in the last 20 years. So obviously, I can see why there's this motivation to cross the border illegally, legally, whatever the case may be. But I'm also clear of what has happened over the last probably 20, 30 years to the economic system of both the United States and California. And it's clear to me, we're on the road of ruin. I looked at, Ron didn't take the time to read to you the attachment to the press release from Mike Antonovich's office, and it calculates the CalWorks, the food stamps, and then the combination of how much the illegals are getting in California over the last year, and then it gives you the total through April of this year. And I did some quick math, and it's up over about 20% increase this year over last year. So you can see clearly what's taking place here. And so I understand everybody's frustration, and we talked about emotion. And so I can get really emotional about it. You know, when I go to my wife's parents' house, the language that's used there is predominantly And I've just learned to live over the last 15, 20 years that that's just part of her culture, and I embrace that. But that doesn't make it right when people come to this country illegal. So, no, I have not read, you know, I'm going to be honest about it, I haven't read the Arizona law. I don't know if I really, really need to. You know, we could postpone it and take 30 days, and I could go read it. I don't think that's going to change my opinion about people coming here illegally. And unfortunately, if we keep carrying this burden, I don't even know if we're going to be able to afford to go back down to Mexico and do any more medical missions. Because it's the money that we have and the freedom that we have that gives us the ability to go down there and support that country and those impoverished people. It's unfortunate that they've got a corrupt government as well. So when somebody speaks against illegal immigration, when they speak, let me get clear, when they speak that we should give them their rights, I think I'd have to debate, I'm in disagreement with them. And I kind of think I heard that from the mayor tonight. I think he's frustrated. I'm not quite for sure, making the symbolic move of voting for a rule-of-law city, you know, I'm, we've already heard from the sheriff tonight that things are probably not going to change for him and his department, and I suspect it's not going to. So again, I think this is only a symbolic move, despite what we might think we might get out of it. Whether or not that sends a message for other people, to maybe scare tactics for people not to come to Lancaster, that might take place. But I'm not, I don't have any mixed feelings about my position on it. I just feel that it's unfortunate the federal government hasn't done their job, and it's unfortunate that whether it's state government or county, or even at this level, the city has to make positions because other people have not. So whether we wait 30 days to read it, I mean, I don't know where Marvin's thoughts are, but, you know, again, I'm clear that we should just, we can't afford to continue to carry people here on our backs. There's a good example here when I'm looking at, I'm talking about hundreds of millions of dollars just in LA County. It's appalling, so. That's my position. So I'd like to hear from Marvin before we wrap it up, or get closure, or call for a vote, or whatever the case may be. Any other comments?
Yeah, a couple. My mother was an immigrant. She came from England. She became a citizen by going to classes. She did it in a lawful manner. And I think that's what this is about. I think it's, the law's clear. I don't know why we're debating it. It's clear. And we need to take care of ourselves.
Counselwoman Marcus, anything else?
The last thing I would like to say is that really the blame is on the federal government. It's not on, totally on these people that are here illegally. And as far as profiling anyone, if you want to, I mean, different parts of the country, it's different, people from different nationalities, different countries. I know in Key West, Florida, where my husband was born and raised, it's Europeans that are there. And they're there illegally, and they, you know, their visas run out, they're still there. They're taking the jobs that Americans can't get. I think it's really upsetting that there are casualties. And I understand that there are families that are going to be concerned. And I wish they would put the pressure on the federal government to step up and do their job. But also, at the same time, they need to look at those countries where they came from and put the blame where it belongs to. Because why are they fleeing from those countries to come here? I see people every day that are, you know, they're clamoring and dying to get to the United States. We saw it when we lived in Key West. There were people that came from Cuba every day. And the boats that they were in, nobody in their right mind would get on that boat and make that 90-mile trip across that ocean. But they knew what was here, the land of opportunity. But just what is described here by Supervisor Antonovich, it's not sustainable. And in my opinion, we have to look out for American citizens first. And so...
Ron, one more. I just want to be clear that even though I'm going to vote yes on this, I want to make it clear where Mayor Parrish was coming from. I believe his position was, "We're going to pay a price for this." And he's worked hard to get us to where we're at, and we will pay a price for the vote that we're about to take. But I think it's something we have to do.
Amen.
While I respect your opinion, I think the price that we have already paid, the die has already been cast on what type of city we are. I mean, when you implement E-Verify and you say no matricular council of cards, which is completely different than Los Angeles City, that already sets the tone. I believe, and I strongly believe, this is not a thing about hate. It is not a thing about ripping parents from their children. It is not a partisan rhetoric. It is truly the support of our national sovereignty and protecting the public safety of our citizens. And that, every one of us up here, whether, I mean, whether you're a lifeguard, a police officer, a planning commissioner, a council member, you take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the laws. And I think this is a resolution, but it sends a message. And that message is that we are not a safe harbor, that we support our citizens, and it's truly a public safety issue. So I move that we adopt Resolution Number 10-54.
I will second that.
Call for a vote. That says unanimously with Mayor Parrish absent. We will take a five-minute short break. Thank you. Back to order. City manager. I have a few. First off, for those of the public that don't know, we had two great events this week, Solar Lancaster and the KB-BYD home completion today, and I hope you follow those stories because they're very, very important for the future of Lancaster. We were just notified, and we'll get a press release out on it, but we at least won one Helen Putnam Award of Excellence for our economic stimulus package. So we will get that information out in the press release, and I compliment all of the staff for doing an excellent job on that. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce today our new Boulevard Deputy, Brandon Hartshorn, who is here. Brandon will be joined by a second deputy very, very shortly, and we know Brandon's doing a good job because we've gotten lots of calls from businesses saying, "This guy's great. He's been in our business. He's talked to us." So he's visible, he's been on foot, and we're really looking forward to him working with us as we make the Boulevard what we know it can be. I'd also like to really thank the staff, in particular the Parks Department, it was really all staff, Public Works, et cetera, for the fireworks and the Fourth of July celebration. It was probably the most enjoyable Fourth of July celebration, because I won the potato race too. But the Fourth of July, the fireworks were absolutely spectacular. And it was just, we had, Bob, what do you think, 8,000, and there was probably 15,000 outside the fairgrounds? So it was really a good show for the community.
Great turnout.
Thank you.
Probably, I've gone probably the last 10 years consecutively. Clearly, that was just about double that I've ever seen it. I mean, speaking in terms of what was there on the fairgrounds and outside, spectacular.
Now, who put on the press conference today, the KB and BYD? That was, the beauty of that is truly a citywide event. We had every single department involved in the different aspects of it. And it really took, to put on something of that magnitude, and I'll brag a little on the city of Lancaster. The city of Los Angeles, which has a little more population than us, when BYD had their announcement in the city of Los Angeles, neither one of their press conferences were as tight or as organized or as good as the ones put on by the city of Lancaster. And we didn't go out for outside help to do that. We did that ourselves. And it was every single department that put that on, and we really showcased Lancaster to the world, literally, today. No, I wanted to thank all of staff, and I know every department, you know, Brian dressed up for the occasion. I saw him there, his baseball cap. We had a tent. We had a tent. You didn't have to, but no, he did a fantastic, everybody did just a fantastic job. It was, it was just amazing, like staff always does. So I can't wait till the Boulevard's done, and we do that first big party on the Boulevard. So it's got to be wonderful. So great job, great job. Let's see here, just, I got this card here, Bobby Numorado? No, 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 just stay right there. You have done that you wanted to talk about the juvenile ordinance. We're already done with that, so, you know, it's continued for 30 days. If you'd like to come back then and speak to it, your card was late. I just wanted to tell you now, in case you had to go someplace. So the next thing, city clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on Non-Agendized Matters. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the council, the city manager, or city staff can get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your three minutes begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda. Therefore, your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, when you come up, please refrain from talking about any of the topics that we've already talked about tonight. This is the non-agendized item opportunity for you to tell us anything you want, except what was agendized. So first, Speaker Robin Tarver.
Good evening. It's been a long time since I've been here and addressed, well, I don't think any of you were on the board, last time I was here. But I wanted to come out and just celebrate with the businesses and to the mayor here in his absence. You guys are doing such a great job. It's so easy to use the economy as an excuse, but you have so many nonprofits and great organizations putting on events that are raising money to help keep children active and safe. And I just wanted to come out and just acknowledge, I'm a resident of Palmdale, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I see what you guys are doing, and I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Anthony Walker.
My name is Tony Walker. I'm with Sherwood-Mova Home Park. I'm on board. We were here about six to eight weeks ago, three meetings ago. Ray Chivara spoke for us, as he normally does, because he's the only guy who can stand up here without falling apart. And he asked the question, "What was going on with the ordinance that you folks passed to protect us from our park being removed as a senior park?" The mayor, whom I wanted to address this to, made some kind of a, I guess it was supposed to joke, and he said something about, "Did we want molesters or kids in the park?" Well, he laughed. I didn't think it was funny, and when we left, we didn't think it was funny either. We're in a serious situation. We're a senior park. We now have 10 families in there, and nothing seems to be getting done. The mayor asked Mr. McCune what was going on. He said he would get a brief... And I just wanted to come out and just acknowledge, I'm a resident of Palmdale, but I just wanted to acknowledge that I see what you guys are doing, and I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Anthony Walker.
My name is Tony Walker. I'm with Sherwood-Mova Home Park. I'm on the board. We were here about six to eight weeks ago, three meetings ago. Ray Chivara spoke for, for us, as he normally does, because he's the only guy who can stand up here without falling apart. And he asked the question, what was going on with the ordinance that you folks passed to protect us from our park being removed as a senior park? The mayor, whom I wanted to address this to, made a, made some kind of a, I guess it was supposed to joke, and he said something about, did we want molesters or kids in the park? Well, he laughed. I didn't think it was funny. And when we left, we didn't think it was funny either. We're in a serious situation. We're a senior park. We now have 10 families in there, and nothing seems to be getting done. The mayor asked Mr. McEwen what was going on. He said he would get a brief the next week. Well, that's eight weeks ago. I'd like to have you ask him what that brief said and what we're going to do about it. Is he going to make a decision pretty soon? Or are we just going to roll over and die? Because the people in the park now all say, you try to get them to come, and they say, well, they're not going to do anything about it. Waterhouse is a big organization. Ruben Garcia is a sleaze that works for him. He's going to get what he wants. And I'd like to know what they're going to do. What decision's going to be made? If you're going to, not going to help us, say so. If you're going to help us, tell us what you're going to do. We're just, it's going on and on. It's been going on for six months. You hired an attorney. What was he, pro bono or something? He didn't, it took them four months to decide whether your ordinance was good or not? The ordinance that you put together with your own attorney? And I guess that's not the problem. I heard that there was a technical reason. Could we ask Mr. McEwen what the problem is?
Well, this isn't really the time for a discussion item. Can I give a brief? I can give a brief answer?
You could ask the mayor.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I know, but it's not on the agenda for a discussion. This is just the, the non-agendized items. And we can have the city manager and the city attorney, you know, the city manager contact you and give you the information. They can brief all of us, and then we can see. But Mr. McEwen would like to say a few words.
Yeah, very briefly. We did finish the review of that, and, and there were some ongoing discussions with our code enforcement attorneys, which is a different law firm. And finally, after the conclusion of those, we've determined that, and actually, the letter was sent out, I believe, yesterday to the owners of the, of the park, indicating to them that the ordinance applied to Sherwood and that they were expected to comply with the ordinance. There was a carbon copy of that letter sent to Ray Chivara. So he should, he, if he didn't get it today, he should get it tomorrow, the next day. And so they are directed to enforce our ordinance, and we'll see where it goes from there. But they've initiated the process to enforce the ordinance.
Was there a technical problem that you mentioned to somebody?
There was a, let me just put this way, there was a difference of opinion in, in interpretation of the ordinance, and I got in it and resolved it, and we're moving forward.
Well, can I have one more second to bring up something? We heard that there was a problem with, that the original owner, when he changed it to a senior park, didn't follow the rules, didn't put in the proper paperwork, and that's what was holding it up.
No, I, I don't think that's, that's it.
Not it?
No, there's, there is a clear difference of opinion among the owners of the park and the city as to whether or not that in fact is a senior park. And their lawyer has advanced some certain arguments, and I, you know, I don't need to get into them tonight. But we're going to be diametrically opposed to the position that the park owners are taking. And, and that, that process is going to go forward, and I would expect it's going to take some time.
So go ahead, so go ahead, sir. Wait till you get, Ray gets the, the letter and read it over. If you have any other questions, please.
Here's the one thing, can I just say that's kind of?
Contact me.
We have 10 families in there. If you guys harry this out another two months, those 10 families, they're all non-English speaking families. They tell their families, they move in. There's four open spaces, four people died last week. So every time somebody's space comes up, it's going to fill in. And I'm not a racist, don't get that wrong. They're non-English speaking families, and they're, I guess they're Hispanic, I don't know, I can't talk to them. But that's what's going to happen. So we're going to be filled with families. What good does it do to go through with the ordinance?
If you have any questions, please contact Mr. Bozigan, and you can always have.
We try. We're waiting for a phone call from.
Excuse me?
You didn't call back.
Yeah, that is.
Phone call was from me.
You told him to call, that's right.
Yes.
Anyone who calls me gets a call back.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Christina Smith, and I am a member of this community, and I have a concern tonight. I'm here to bring awareness to our community, to all our community leaders, employers, and to those in charge of the housing division in our area in the Antelope Valley, that our parolees who are being released into the Antelope Valley need employment and housing. Our community does not have enough. I am asking for employers and housing department to come alongside of these men and women who need a second chance, to open up more resources for them. Without employment, they are not able to make it, to pay the restitution, to start over, to stay out of prison. If we, as a community, do nothing about this issue, they will fail. And our, oh, and our failure as a community to provide support to these men and women will result in an increase of crime, which will compromise the safety of our community. It makes a difference to those who want to change their lives. I speak from experience. I'm an ex-felon who has successfully discharged off parole. I know the challenges firsthand these men and women will face if we don't support them. I am homeless. I am seeking employment and stability. It has been a challenge for me for the past two years. I am persistent in my goals. I cannot see how I will get there, but I know I will. Today, I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me, and with Him, all things are possible. I've learned this through my journey. I am a volunteer with Prison Fellowship as an inmate liaison in the community for parole reentry. I'm giving back to the community. I am an entrepreneur, and I am working on getting my business out in the community. I trust that what I have shared with you tonight will cause you to act on what needs to be done in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Postel, and I'm here to advocate for prisoners, ex-prisoners, and their families. I'm an employee with Prison Fellowship. I'm a field director for Los Angeles County for in-prison and reentry. My responsibility is to engage the C D R C and the community, organizations in the community and the local churches, to provide support to inmates returning back into the community. Also, we are engaged in several prisons in Southern California with programs that provide life skills to inmates, men and women, to prepare them to return back into the community. Our program is two years long. It's, has been a successful program in states such as Kansas and Texas that has proven to have a 90% success rate. So we're now providing the program in the Lancaster State Prison. Our goal is to create a coalition that will help inmates returning into the community to address the issue and support these inmates with housing, employment, and also to provide a wholesome environment for their children. I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Tammany Fields.
I wanted to ask you guys to consider observing something regarding the red light cameras. If you drive by them, you'll notice something, or may never have even noticed it. But the signs that warn you that you're coming upon the cameras are affixed right above the cameras. If you notice other signs, such as you're coming up on a signal ahead, you'll see the big triangular signal ahead, many feet away from the intersection. I decided to bring this up because some may know, because I put in the opinion section that I got one of those lovely, it just broke the bank tickets. And I think for the safety of everybody, if it's forewarned much further away, a woman just recently wrote she got rear-ended because she panicked when she saw that yellow light. So I would like you guys to just maybe take a drive, observe, and see where the distance is to those triangular warnings for the signals, as opposed to the camera light you're being photographed is right above the camera. It should be much further away. I think it would really help people to wake up and say, uh-oh, camera ahead. So just if you would consider that, I think it would be a great thing, and people in Lancaster would appreciate it. I know I would. Thank you.
You know, that actually is a good suggestion, because if we're trying to control the way people drive through those intersections, it's not that we're trying to catch them and make money, it's that, you know, we want them to slow down and stop. So maybe it does make sense to have it back where they're actually get warned that, because we're trying to change behavior. So maybe we can look into that.
I think it's a very reasonable request to look at, and we can certainly do that rather quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, Andrew Nieto.
Well, I was going to continue my comments on the previous issue, but you have asked for that not to be the case, so I will go ahead and respect that.
Thank you.
I would like to point out that I, despite my skin color, I actually am Hispanic. My family, my last name is Nieto. My family has been in this country since the 1600s, before Jamestown even, and Spanish is the language of my family. I do not know if the routes for the parades have already been decided upon. I, it's my understanding that Lancaster Boulevard may no longer be a viable option because it's too narrow to accommodate the floats. So I simply wanted to suggest that Avenue I between 10th and 20th Street West be considered as a parade route. It's pretty close to downtown. It's essentially still the heart of Lancaster. And there's a great number of businesses along that route. Parades inherently support businesses that are nearby. And parades also, and other events, have a definite positive impact on the communities around them. So it seems as part of the ongoing efforts of the city to revitalize its downtown area that having parades, such as the Christmas Parade, the Fair Parade, Veterans Parade, whatever else we have, that in the stretch of Avenue I between 10th and 20th would be a good place to have our parades. And, yeah, I just wanted to suggest that.
Thank you, Mr. Nieto. Okay, council reports. The first one is mine, District 14, sanitation district. You know, right now, we are working on trying to get our, our equitable share of recycled water. And we're, depending on the numbers and everything, the county gets about 13, 13,500 acre-feet per year. City Palmdale gets 4,000 acre-feet per year. The county has given them a contract for, how much more, Robert? About 4,000 plus, another 2,000 plus 75% overage? And we get 950. So, and we could use at least 5,000. So right now, we are trying to negotiate and get that to work. So with the city to the south. So that's, that's the big issue there, is I think the county waterworks has their position, and then we have ours, and so we're trying to move it over. That's the, that's the biggest, most important issue that we have, making sure we get our recycled water for the Purple Pipe. So council report two, Councilwoman Marcus.
I think I'm going to do this.
Oh, you're going to do that? Okay.
It's for the air quality control management. We approved a budget for the 2010, 2011 year. We did a 2% increase on the consumer, the consumer price index, and they changed the fee from a per product to a per nozzle. And we heard about the inland energy from the Palmdale plant. So we heard about that all last session. So that was about it.
Great. And who's got to do the A D T A?
On Board of A D T A. The Board approved the fiscal year 2011 budget. The Board gave input regarding requests for proposal for the next transit operator. And the Board voted in favor of the city of Lancaster being the model as required by law. We had to pick one of the, in the jurisdiction. And the executive director's spending authority was raised to 25,000.
Thank you. Anything else? Council comments? Anything from anybody? I'd like to, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do. I have, I have something that I believe if we can have it queued up, have a very short presentation. Only just take a couple of minutes. I have a presentation that I'd like to bring your attention, that who are the true winners of the 2010 tater races? Mayor Paris promised he would not have Deputy Mayor Sito represent him in any capacity other than as an ambassador in Chinese relations. Deputy Mayor Sito participated, her participation in the tater race was not approved by the council. And as a compassionate personal injury lawyer, why didn't Mayor Paris insist all of the participants have safety vests, as did the Chris Mann team? Next slide.
You guys had safety vests?
Vice Mayor Ron Smith.
We were prepared.
Vice Mayor Ron Smith.
I have a potato in my hand right there.
Was not excused by council to miss the tater race and notice the two taters by Vice Mayor Smith's right hand. Is that some kind of an omen? Was not authorized by council to give Mr. Bozigan the right to choose another contestant to replace him in the tater race. Next slide. Councilmen Chris and Mann using an unlicensed souped-up sports car.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute.
Using a safety vest when no other competitors were offered a safety vest, and displaying the American flag while cheating. City manager cheater face Mark Bozigan is guilty of nepotism by choosing his own muscle-bound 17-year-old son to go against the sweet, innocent, patriotic granny. Also used his own beefed-up vehicle against a gutless hybrid in the competition between the Marcus Bryant versus Bozigan teams.
I told you not to use your son.
Cheater face Mark Bozigan continued, made derogatory hand signs over the sweet, innocent, patriotic granny's head while having picture made, as the sweet, innocent, patriotic granny was totally unaware. And all other teams were offered a timeframe to practice while the Marcus Bryant team was not. Therefore, we must conclude that Mayor Paris, Deputy Mayor Sito, Vice Mayor Ron Smith, Councilman Chris Mann, Mr. Bozigan, and all other city staff were conspiring against the team of Marcus and Bryant, who are the true winners of this year's tater race.
Do we get rebuttal?
I, I, I think that's a long way of her saying she lost in the first round.
I think so. So we come with safety equipment. We, and that, you can drive that car legally on the street.
Well, it is a licensed vehicle, but unlike the councilwoman, we chose to advertise for our local.
Right. Local businesses that helped participate. They even did the rodeo.
Is this, is this a Brown Act violation? Is this not on the agenda?
On behalf of all the city staff.
It's on council, council agency comments.
On behalf of all the city staff, specifically Robert Neal. We'd like to give the trophy to the Jerry Bryant and Sherry Marcus.
For, for those of, for those of you in the audience, former deputy city manager Jason Cottle did not identify himself.
There's no camera. Nobody's got a phone? Wait, oh, okay.
Come on, Fran. Please, Fran, they didn't get their picture taken on the Fourth of July. Okay. May, may I have a moment, Vice Mayor Smith? Okay, go ahead.
In, in the interest of justice and the American way, so that the public really knows what happens, we do have a couple photos of the finish. I don't know how to work this, though, Kelvin. There you would see the Bozigan team finishing well ahead of the Chris Mann team. Again, finishing well ahead of the Chris Mann team.
You did very well with the 17-year-old.
And the beefed-up car. Against the hybrid.
This, this would be, again, beating the Bryant-Marcus team. And that's the truth, justice in the American way. Thank you.
The saga rolls.
Okay, to be continued next year. Oh, no, no, we have a go-kart race. That's right. There you go.
Shaun's available that day, too.
Oh, gosh.
You probably can't have safety equipment there either, huh, Sherry?
No.
No, with safety equipment, we do the go-karts.
You know, I don't know what you guys were doing, because, I mean, you had a safety vest on, you had about 20 cushions in the car. I'm like.
So on a, on a. So on another note, you know, we have, and Nick West isn't here anymore, and our staff, Bob Green, we have an amazing art gallery that's coming up. I mean, the last show that we had was the kind that you get in L.A. And in order to make it happen, especially in these tough times, we really enjoy having the community be involved in this. So I'd like to invite any citizens that are, would like to apply and work for the Public Arts Museum Art Gallery Foundation as volunteers to please contact our, you know, start with the city, or you can contact Bob Green or Nick West. And it's really, the people that are involved with that really have a great time, and they put on some great shows. And we're going to have the new museum built here pretty soon. When is that going to be done?
Today. It's going to announce February.
February, the new museum. So that'll be fantastic. With that, we have the Lancaster Financing Authority. There's no action on that. There's no closed session. So without any objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned until Tuesday, July 27 at 5:00 p.m.